Good evening, everyone. This is Marie Sullivan, President of the Maricopa Community College Governing Board. And what we have ahead of us is a series of hearings and meetings for this evening. Before we start, I would like to just say a couple of words about the fact that I am joining you virtually, as all of us are. But I am away, and it's because I am a new grandmother and celebrating a new life. But as a result of that, today's news just really hit me in the solar plexus about what happened in Texas. What happened in Buffalo is horrible, what happens around our communities. There are many tragedies and horrors, but today, young children, teachers just kind of hit me hard. So I think I'd like to start just with a quick 30 seconds of self-reflection before I call us to order. So if we can, 30 seconds of silence and reflection on today's activities and whatever that means to you. So with that, I'd like to again say good evening. And I'm now going to call to order the public hearings of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for May 24, 2022. For the record, I'm going to call roll call vote of the board members. I'm going to start with you. Are you present, Mr. Evans, our student trustee?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith? I expect she'll be joining us shortly. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen? With my presence right now, we're showing five board members present with Mr. Evans, our student trustee, also present. So tonight, again, we have a couple items. The first one is our truth and taxation notice of a tax increase. And this is numbered on our agenda C2. It's taxation here, truth and taxation hearing required under state law. The Maricopa County Community College District is considering a proposal to increase primary property taxes in fiscal year 2022, '23 on existing property. The proposed increase is 0.9289%, which equals $5,029,432 in additional property tax revenues from existing property. At this time, Elsa, do we have any resident or taxpayer who would like to address the governing board concerning the proposed action under consideration to increase our primary property taxes on existing property?
Ms. Sullivan, this is Elsa, and for the record, no, I have not received any.
Thank you. Are there any comments from board members on this topic? If there are, please just speak up.
Yes, this is Jean McGrath, and I have a question about it. It seems to me that we were told that we would be increasing this one tax, but that it would not increase the general income and that somehow or another it would equal out. Is that still correct?
Mrs. McGrath, I'm going to refer your question to Ms. Grunio if she's in present. If not, Dr. Gonzalez, whomever else you would like to direct that to.
I'm here, President Sullivan. This is Kim Grunio, interim CFO for the district. You all can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. President Sullivan and Mrs. McGrath. So what this is part of the tax shift from lowering the debt service or a lower debt service. Then we shift a portion of the secondary property tax to the primary property tax, and it's dedicated to capital programs. The overall tax rate still does decline, yes. But there is a slight increase in the primary property tax rate in order to fund the capital programs.
Thank you. That was what I recalled. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions from the board members on the truth and taxation element? There being none, I want also to share that Ms. Bittersmith is on. She just needs to be unmuted. And she would be announced as also present in the roll call vote. So I'm changing that to six board members present. And someone couldn't fix her on technical difficulty. Board members, there aren't any other questions from what I can tell. So with that, I'm going to move to our item C3 under the hearing. Our proposed fiscal year 2022, '23 budget for the Maricopa County Community College District. This is also a public hearing concerning the adoption of the proposed budget of the Maricopa County Community College District for fiscal year 2022, '23. This hearing is required under state law. The purpose of the hearing is to give any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to protest the inclusion of any item in the proposed budget. Elsa, at this time, do we have any resident and/or taxpayer who would like to address the governing board concerning the proposed action under consideration?
Hello, Ms. Sullivan. And for the record, this is Elsa. We do not have a citizens interim for item D3 on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Are there any comments from board members on the proposed budget?
President Sullivan, this is Susan. I don't have a comment. I just want to let you know whatever was happening has been corrected, and I have been on the call, and I'm now able to hear everybody.
Thank you. I did note for the record that you have been present in the board roll call.
Thank you. And thank you to the team for fixing my problem.
Board members, again, before I conclude the public hearings, is there any comment on the proposed budget? Being none, I, at this time of 6:38 PM on 5/24, conclude the public hearings. Thank you. With that, I'm going to move us now to the special board meeting of May 24, 2022. So this considered meeting now convened. Again, for the record, I will call a roll call vote of the board members. And once again, I will begin with you, Mr. Evans, as our student trustee on the board.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith?
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen? With my presence, this would also show that there are six board members present and our student trustee as well. So the first item on this agenda is item D2 and a motion to levy the increased property taxes as previously described. Is there a motion to that effect? Board members?
Shall move.
Shall move.
Thank you. So Dr. Thor made the motion to levy the increased property taxes as previously described. Is that a second from you, Dr. Norini?
Yes, it is. My second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion by board members? Being none, in accordance with state law, the governing board will now vote on this motion by a roll call vote. Ms. Bittersmith?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Nay.
Mrs. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Aye.
Dr. Thor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen is not present. I vote aye. So by a vote of five to one nay and one not present, the motion will pass, making note that the student trustee at this point was not voting. So with that, we move to item D3, adoption of proposed fiscal year 2022, '23 Maricopa Community College District budget. So again, what I need is a motion on a second for approval of the proposed fiscal year 2022, '23 Maricopa Community College District budget. In approving the budget, the board also authorizes the expenditures of budgeted revenues and realized or designated fund balances within the total amount budgeted in each fund. That would be general fund, auxiliary plant fund, quasi-endowment restricted, and debt service. The board has also been presented with a budget that would be acted on to with approval of the 92.89% increase in the existing tax levy. Since we just approved that, that will also be part of the budget as presented and approved this evening. Do I have a motion and a second on this item?
Shall move.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Is there a second?
Second. This is Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. There's been a motion and a second to approve the budget with the tax levy as presented. Is there additional discussion by board members on this motion? Being none, again, in accordance with state law, the governing board will now vote on the motion by roll call vote. Ms. Bittersmith?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Nay.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Aye.
Ms. Nguyen is not present. I vote aye. With that, the board budget passes on a vote of five to one nay and one absent. So the 2022, '23 Maricopa Community College budget has now been adopted. With that, I'd also like to thank Dr. Gonzalez, the entire team that put this budget together, and the dedication and work that they contributed to making this a budget that reached approval this evening. So to all of you who have worked this year to make this budget possible, thank you very much. Okay, so now I'm going to move us to our regular meeting. And again, here we go. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for May 24, 2022. Once again, I'm going to call a roll call vote of board members. Mr. Evans, our student trustee, are you present?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith?
I'm here.
Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
I'm still here.
Thank you. Good. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen? With my attendance, we have six board members present, one absent, and we have the presence of our student trustee, Mr. Evans. Want to note that there are no substitutions for this evening. And I also understand that tonight, we do not have a faculty executive council report. Also, the adjunct faculty report has been written and submitted and has been attached. She doesn't require any speaking time on the agenda tonight. Then we're going to move to our employee representation update from Ms. Anna Chandler and Ms. Shannon Manje. Good evening, and we're great, ready, and here to hear you report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. Anna and I are calling you from on location, if you will. We are out celebrating some fun family events. And in light of what the news heard today, I'm going to hug my three babies a little tighter tonight. I am out at my son's baseball tournament while they are warming up. I will give you this board presentation, and then Anna can celebrate, can announce what she's celebrating tonight. So let's get to it. Next slide, please, Elsa. I can't shout out enough, a huge congratulations to the class of 2022. Students, we are so, so proud of all the hard work you put into this. These pictures are just a glimpse into the many, many in-person celebrations that were held across our district. You'll see that Phoenix College had their 100th graduating class. M-Vet, Dr. Loschinsky, and Dr. Norini were in attendance. Our nursing classes, writing classes, everyone, we are so, so proud of you. So what I encourage all of our district colleagues, all of our community members listening, please visit all the college social media pages and look at these pictures. It is what gives us our motivation to come to work every day for staff and faculty and leadership. All those spaces are the reasons we come. Students who graduated, I hope you keep in touch with your campuses, with that special faculty member or that special staff member who got you through these last few years and classes and helped you succeed, whether it's through an alumni program or just staying in touch. Let us know how things are going well after you have graduated. You have never left us. You are just going on to bigger and better things, and we can't be more proud of you. Next slide, please. Not only have our students graduated, but our colleagues, our fellow employees have graduated too. Thank you to the Employee Representation Communications Team who does our newsletter. They put a call out so we could celebrate our colleagues who are graduating. You will see the list of names on the screen before you. I encourage you to go to the employee newsletter and watch the video and learn about what our colleagues are doing, how they are increasing and furthering their educational goals. We are so proud of you guys. Not only are you taking care of loved ones and our students, but you somehow found the drive to further your education. You all are role models for all of us. Congratulations on all your hard work. Next slide, please. I am so excited to share this photo with Anna and with everybody on the call today who may be watching the recording. This was a huge moment for employee representation, governing board, and faculty. We had a joint employee council meeting on March 31st. It was held in a hybrid format at Rio Salado. So thank you, President Smith, and our Rio Salado employee reps for making this a flawless in-person and virtual meeting. President Sullivan and Dr. Thor. My apologies. I'm on my phone, and I lost the screen. There it goes. We just want to say thank you to both of you for coming to our March Joint Employee Council Meeting and engaging with our representatives. The conversation was informational and greatly appreciated by everyone. We cannot thank you enough for your support for employee representation. We look forward to future meetings like this with both of you, as well as engaging other board members. As you can see by the photo, we also had Dr. Sasha Radisich, FEC president, come to our board meeting and discuss tuition with our employees. Very, very informational. Dr. Radisich, thank you for your presentation and discussion on tuition. The representatives walked away from that meeting with so much information on tuition. It still comes up in meetings. We look forward to future collaborative meetings like this. Next slide, please. We would like to support and put a call out for the Linda B. Rosenthal Women's Mentor Program. Applications close this week. If you have any of our colleagues, any of your employees, your direct reports, supervisors, leaders who have ever shown interest in this program, please encourage them to apply. Anna and I have been a part of women's programs within Maricopa, and we highly encourage you to do this. I stepped out of my comfort zone several years ago and joined the Women's Mentor Program, and that was the start of the many, many initiatives that I wanted to join and be a part of within Maricopa. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me or Anna or any of your Women's Mentor Program reps on your campuses. Please, please, please get those applications in this week. Next slide, please. I will now turn it over to Anna Chandler.
Thank you, Shannon. Good luck to your son tonight. I hope he does well. Thank you for the introduction as well. We're celebrating my brother-in-law's graduation this week as he finishes high school. So thank you for that intro, Shannon. Tonight, we just want to go ahead and highlight Estrella Mountain. These are your current representatives as we finish out the year towards July 1st. These are the representatives that have been serving with us. Many of them are also are returning. Three-year EGOC beginning representatives. And so we have Regina Hernandez Garcia, Nadine Sellers, and Rod Franklin, who represent our exempt counsel and our sworn officers. Next slide, please. And then you have your non-exempt counsel, who's going to be Enrique Henry Izaguirre, Yvette Ruiz, and Yvette Morales Muller, excuse me. And these are going to be your non-exempt reps. We want to thank everyone, as we know it's been a challenging year. And as we see everyone to their term in July 1st, we'd like to bring in our new election results. I will not read all of these names to you, but these are going to be the election results for 2022, 2023, and who will be serving with us in non-exempt, exempt, and sworn officers per their campuses. We'd also like to thank the senators that are returning for their second term. And a huge thanks to Shannon Manje, as well, as she continues her second co-president round as we elect our new co-president in this following week. Next slide, Elsa. Go ahead and give you guys some time to read these. Next slide, please. Thank you so much, Elsa. And so, thank you. And just as the governing board has requested, we do have updated data for the in-person and remote work. So far, there are 872 remote and virtual work requests that have been made, 10 of which are requests for new remote or virtual recruitment requests. 297 of those requests have been approved, 16 have been denied, while the remainder are currently under evaluation. We are aware that there are concerns from leadership around allowing fully remote or fully virtual positions to be granted or created. And we are working really close with our president's cabinet at this time to really work on collaborating how we come back and communicate the return, the remote and virtual work policy requests. We do know of some staff who have elected to leave Maricopa in pursuit of more flexible options or have elected to retire early as we return from this pandemic. We look forward to being able to collaborate with our leaders to find ways to offer reasonable and student-focused opportunities for staff. Next slide, please. We'd like to do a huge thank you to Dr. Sasha Radajis. We know that this is not the last time our paths will cross, but we've left here with a little letter for you. Dr. Sasha Radovich, employee representation would like to acknowledge your support, friendship, and allyship, but most importantly, your kind and collaborative leadership. Employee representation has been empowered by leading alongside you as we have worked hard to find our way in navigating these new roles. You have shown us patience and have guided us through best practices that Shannon and I recognize as having made us stronger leaders for the staff of Maricopa. Your leadership is a true definition of courage, integrity, and equity. You have advocated for staff when our voices, voice was not being heard, and you continue to empower us to find ways to continue moving forward. We appreciate you ensuring our voice is heard when staff need to be, need to be recognized in their most vulnerable moments. We know you have a long, we know we have a long road together in building a better and more equitable Maricopa for all. But with the confidence and safe space you have provided us to grow in, we will continue to lead by example and push to be a strong and productive voice for all of the staff of Maricopa. Sasha, we know that this leadership role will not be the only time our paths will cross, and we will look forward to the further shared governance, employee experiences, and transparent communication with those it directly affects. We are considered, sorry, excuse me. We are excited to continue building a strong and progressive relationship with Dr. Camille Newton, and we are confident the relationship you have made with employee representation and faculty leadership will be continued and celebrated as our collaboration is a key component of providing a successful and healthy relationship between faculty and staff in the years to come. Thank you so much, Sasha. We really appreciate everything you've done to help empower us. Next slide, please. That is the end of our presentation. If you have any questions, we thank you and hope everyone is enjoying the summer months as we move into our holiday break.
Thank you. As always, we appreciate your reports. I want to go back just a few steps here. When we called for the facts to report, I noted that there was no report this evening because Dr. Radisich is no longer our FEC president. There is a new president. And I believe it's, I know, Camille, I don't know if you're present on the call this evening, but we look forward to hearing from you in the future on our agendas. So with that, I'll keep us moving forward on our agenda. And we will move to the Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation Semi-Annual Presentation to the Board. Mr. Brian Spicker, who is President CEO, Stephanie Hertzberg, who is Chair, and Julie Reese, who is Vice Chair, will be taking us through their presentation. I do want to note that there's also going to be a video component to this presentation. And for those of you who are listening, I want you to know that you can control the volume and the size of the video as it appears. And options for these are in the button right of the video. Also, anyone who called indirectly with their phone will not be able to hear the audio. So you're going to be able to watch and hear the video. I know it'll be great, Mr. Spicker, once it is posted to our YouTube page. And with that, I welcome you and Ms. Hertzberg and Ms. Reese, and we're ready to hear from you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And good evening, President Sullivan, governing board members, Chancellor and Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC and guests. We are excited to be here for our twice yearly foundation update. You will find a slide deck in your materials, and this will guide, will help as a guide for our presentation. My colleagues and I might not cover everything, but we will definitely cover the key points. It is basically a good news story for the foundation, colleges, and our students. I want to specifically thank the chancellor, the provost, our college presidents, resource development partners, and faculty and staff for their collaboration, which has led to a successful year. Lastly, I want to thank our board and staff who worked tirelessly on behalf of our students. Next slide, please. Our mission at the foundation is to make post-secondary education and certifications accessible and affordable. The foundation manages over 1,000 funds and works with over $60 million in assets tied to endowments and restricted funds. Additionally, we work to raise funds every day for scholarships, program support for colleges, as well as emergency and basic needs funding for students. While the foundation continues to build its pool of scholarship funding to cover the cost of education, we know the basic needs for students is a growing concern. We know that many of the barriers to retention and completion are tied to the cost of attendance, everyday life challenges, and that is why we are doubling down on raising funds for this area. In the last 24 months, the foundation has awarded over $900,000 in basic and emergency funding needs. Lastly, the foundation board and staff leveraged their relationships in the community to advance district and college objectives with a focus on workforce and industry partnerships and student support. Next slide. Please. Here is a list of our board members. I want to thank them again for their service. You can see by this list the important role they play in leveraging workforce and industry partnerships. I also want to thank governing board members Susan Bitter Smith and Dr. Tom Norini, as well as Presidents Olson, Peterson, and Reyes, who represent the district on the foundation board. Next slide, please. Of our Resource Development Council members who support the philanthropic efforts of the Of our Resource Development Council members who support the philanthropic efforts of their respective colleges and the foundation. Inadvertently, we left off an RDC member on this list, Dr. Brianna DeGass from Paradise Valley Community College. These are critical members of the team that help make our success possible, and we really appreciate their support and impact. On the next slide, we have a short video from one of our students for you to watch.
I'm sorry, if someone has their volume on on their computer, could you please mute it because it's doubling the video output? Thank you.
Paying for college can be tough, but with the help of donors like you, students like me can access a great education that sets us up for success.
In April 2020, our students were first affected by the pandemic. But thanks to our emergency fund, over 5,000 students got help with their living expenses, including food, gas, rent, utilities, and car repairs.
Over 8,000 students applied for scholarships, and about half were awarded scholarships. Even though $2.5 million in tuition, course fees, and school supplies were awarded, we would love to help everyone who truly needs it.
Our greatest needs fund helps students where they need it the most. This money helps with technology, textbooks, and class supplies, and any unforeseen needs that arise.
Thanks to people like you who donate to these programs, thousands of students each year get to follow their dreams without worrying how they'll pay for college. Your support makes a difference. Donate today.
Thank you. Now I'm going to turn it over to Brian Spicker to review some of our major accomplishments as well as key metrics.
Thank you, Stephanie, Governing Board Chair Marie Sullivan, Governing Board Members Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC, and guests. I'll go over a few of these items in greater detail in the next few slides. Right now, I'm going to focus here on emergency and basic need support. This has grown exponentially over the last 24 months. When I first joined the foundation, the first year in 2019, $10,000 that year was awarded for student supports. The pandemic really focused our efforts in terms of meeting students' needs as it's so important that they have the ability to persist and stay focused and complete their education by having some of their daily life stressors handled. We recently received a grant from Fries for $50,000 for our colleges' food pantries and student grocery carts. We know this kind of support is critical to persistence and completion. The next area I'm going to focus on is Mesa Promise. Mesa Community Colleges set the example on how a city, college, and foundation could come together with a last-dollar effort, paired with student stipends for needs with a five-year commitment of $100,000 per year by the City of Mesa. Thank you, Dr. Berkwam and Christos Kronos, as well as Mayor Giles and others now for setting this in motion. Now, the other college presidents and the foundation are working to scale the efforts across the valley. City of Peoria stepped up with a two-year commitment of $100,000 per year for Glendale Community Colleges. We are currently in conversations with the City of Tempe, City of Phoenix, City of Scottsdale, and Queen Creek. We expect to see more of this effort and appreciate the hard work the college staff, faculty, and presidents are doing to make this possible. Next slide, please. Oh, I meant to say too, with that, you know, this promise effort, local governments too can support education. And in fact, we just learned recently that the City of Avondale has committed $430,000 over a three-year period for scholarships at Australia Mountain Community College. I'm sharing now our scholarship applications. And one of the great achievements this year was the district colleges and the foundation launched a new scholarship platform, making the application process uniform across the system. Hooray for our students. This was a big and important lift. This slide depicts applications completed and submitted for the fall semester. We are just awarding those scholarships. We are up 84% over the same period last year with those submitted application. It's an amazing increase, and we believe it's due to this uniform application approach, a cohesive outreach effort across campuses with the support of faculty and staff, and a continued growing need for financial support from our students. Last year, 64% of our awarded scholarships went to first-generation students. This year, we currently have 665 reviewers sign up for this current application cycle, with a big shout out to our faculty and staff for being a core group of reviewers. We have many volunteers from all over our community who do this work so that we make sure students are awarded scholarships and meet the criteria. If you really want to understand the why we need to raise more revenue, become a reviewer. It will speak volumes. Next slide, please. Now do a few of our metrics. This slide depicts multiple years and a revenue comparison with the green bar being the fiscal year where we're at with our revenue, the purple bars being where we were in the past and the goal that we had for this year. In 2018 and 19, that was the last year of pledges received from a broad-based community campaign. We haven't had a community campaign, but recently, and the foundation in a non-campaign year typically raised a bit over $4 million. You can see in 1920, we broke the $5 million ceiling. During the pandemic, we hit $6 million, and we set a goal of $6.3 million this year. We achieved that goal and surpassed it by 84%, reaching $11,600,000 as of April of this year. I have no doubt we'll get close to that 12 million mark. A big number rolling through the revenue is a legacy gift from Jay Faulkner of $4.7 million for the ACE programs with Phoenix College. A big shout out to Deb Spotts and Kristy Flores as their predecessor and their predecessor Frank Luna, who developed and stewarded this bequest over a 15-plus-year period. Next slide, please. This depicts the two areas where our revenue is focused. It's with gifts and grants. And you can see in the gifts, the first bar there, the 7.7 million, was related to the Faulkner gift and really underscores the long-term need to double down on planned giving as you see the impact of that gift on our gifts. At this time, I'd like to invite Julie Reese, our Vice Chair and Chair of our Board Level Fundraising Committee, to review the district-wide Day of Giving results and what we learned.
Thank you so much, Brian. Next slide, please. Great. It's wonderful to be here with all of you tonight, Governing Board Chair Sullivan, Governing Board Members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC, and guests. I have the privilege of reporting to you tonight on the Day of Giving that took place on March 31st. This was a district-wide event, and our foundation board was fully engaged in the effort along with our college partners. The Resource Development Council played a very important role in this event, and I'd specifically like to recognize Kristy Flora, Deborah Mahoffer, Michelle Akenthar, Erin Fleischman, and Judy Sanchez. They all worked diligently to make this event a huge success. I also want to note that this was only the second year for the Be a Student's Hero fundraiser, and in two years, we more than doubled the funds received. Specifically, we are up 104% over last year and netted close to $140,000, all for an event that solicited contributions online via social media and through our traditional media partner, The Arizona Republic. We did try some new things this year using a matching gift challenge as well as obtaining sponsorships with our media sponsor, The Arizona Republic. And I'd like to specifically acknowledge Chancellor Gonzalez, as well as our foundation president, Brian, because they both stepped up significantly as sponsors for this event and really led by example. So we are thrilled because we were able to double the funds raised this year. We hope to double the funds raised again next year to reach the $250,000 mark or more with your help. But we did definitely learn from the event this year, and faculty and staff were our largest contributors and core participants. So what that tells us is that we have an even bigger opportunity to continue to interact with faculty and staff, but also to cascade this out event, this event out to the broader community. And we definitely look forward to doing that. Next slide, please. This slide shows you the sponsors of the event, which were primarily board members, distinguished community, and corporate partners. And in total, these sponsors contributed over $37,000 to the effort. Salt River Project was a key component of that. Brian's going to tell you a little bit more about that later. But again, I wanted to acknowledge and thank the chancellor, the chancellor's cabinet, the chancellor's executive council, the faculty executive council, the employee senate, and the adjunct faculty council. All of these groups were amplifiers who helped to bring attention to the fundraiser, and they did an absolutely wonderful job. So we are really excited about making this an annual event, and there is more to come. We're going to roll out our effort for next year soon, and our goal is $250,000. I'd like to thank all of you for this opportunity, and I now invite Brian to speak to some of the foundation's recent successes with grants. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Julie. This slide depicts our philanthropic grant success. So the purple eye is what we've achieved, $3.8 million in grants that have been awarded. We have in the green, the not awarded, about a little over a million. And then in the salmon color, pending is close to $3 million in grants, meaning that we made a total request of 7.7 million over this year through April 30th. Last year, for the whole year, it was closer to $3.5 million in requests. So we have doubled down on grants. You can see some of the highlights of the featured awards on this slide. It's really, really important to know that this success is due to relationships with the granters and more critically, the quality of our colleges and districts' output. An example is Dr. Kohn garnering a half a million dollar grant with the Gates Foundation, supporting easy access to holistic student data, funding the development of our assist platform. In a nutshell, the work being done is great, excuse me, and our granters are willing to invest. Additionally, I want to point out a few more factors related to this success. One, the chancellor and I continue to have conversations with foundations and corporate partners, intentionally moving them from a transactional relationship to a transformational partnership, looking at larger awards and multi-year funding. An example would be the grant with Bank of America that is focused on the entire workforce development ecosystem as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Another factor is the close partnership with the district and the colleges, with a shout out to Provost Eric Lashinsky and his team, and Vice Chancellor of Community Government Relations and Economic Development, Darcy Renstroh, and her team. One example is the $1 million grant from Wells Fargo that was a result of a collaboration between the foundation, colleges, and Darcy's team. The last factor I want to share is really all about meeting workforce and industry needs. Working closely with the Center of Entrepreneurial Innovation and its downtown lab force effort, the Flynn Foundation has awarded $351,000 to advanced bioscience training. This is all about collaboration around the incredible work that's happening every day in our colleges by our faculty, staff, and students. Next slide, please. We have a big opportunity at the foundation to run alongside the colleges to develop scholarship funds, student supports, faculty and staff, as well as material supports for many of the new degrees. We'll be working closely with the colleges as the degrees roll out and as we find donors and supporters that will support this effort. There continues to be an enormous opportunity with workforce and industry partners at the outset of the relationship. We're working closely with colleges and Darcy's team with the idea that there be an expectation that our corporate partners, our industry partners, create a flywheel, a flywheel so that students have scholarships and student supports. And one example is Microsoft. Microsoft is doing just that. They provide $30,000 per semester a year to Australia Mountain and Glendale students for scholarship. That's because that expectation and desire was there at the very beginning. We're fine-tuning our alumni engagement efforts as well as planned giving. We need to do more in these areas. And lastly, I look forward to working on the foundation's strategic plan after the conclusion of the district-wide strategic plan effort is complete. So we tightly align. Before I pass it back to Stephanie, I want to thank my small but mighty, high-performing foundation team and our board who make all of these achievements possible. Stephanie, back to you.
Thank you, Brian and Julie, and thank you to the governing board for the opportunity to speak with you and showcase the work we have been doing at the foundation. We will leave you with the final video from the students. And we are happy to take questions if there are any.
Thank you very much for your presentation this evening. And I know as the board forms questions, we can forward them to Mr. Spicker and receive your responses that way. Want to say congratulations on an outstanding fundraising year, and I certainly applaud and recognize that our philanthropic relationships are really critical to the success that you are representing. So thank you again for your leadership, your volunteer efforts, and your outstanding contributions to our system. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Spicker, for your team and all the work done that they do to contribute to the successes. So thanks again for your presentation this evening. I'd like to move us on to the student life reports, and tonight we're going to hear from Rio Salado College. So welcome, Rio Salado College students, your life and leadership advisor, Mr. John Bestain, and students Antoinette Peterson, Carolyn Shaq, Sadie Goldman, and Cordaro Holmes. Please take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC, and guests. My name is Antoinette Pearson, and I'm a student at Rio Salado College. Next slide, please. We are here today, well, we're here this evening, to share a few of the key activities and accomplishments of Rio Salado students during the school year 2021 and 2022. Along with me are three other Rio students, Carolyn Shaq, Sadie Goldman, and Cordaro Holmes. I will briefly introduce them through their slide. I'm Antoinette Pearson, and I'm very fortunate to have the opportunity to collaborate with outside agencies to push certain community initiatives. to collaborate with outside agencies to push certain community initiatives. Next slide, please. Next, we have Carolyn Shack. Carolyn believes age should not be a barrier to education. She is very thankful to Rio Salado for providing her the opportunity to succeed. Next slide, please. We also have Sadie Goldman. Sadie is a dual enrollment student who is very involved and active within her high school and college community. Next slide, please. We also have Cordero Holmes. Cordero Holmes is very engaged within his community and he was also appointed to be the student speaker for the Rio Salado class of 2022. Now I will pass it along to Sadie Goldman, who's going to also cover a few highlights. Thank you.
Thank you, Antoinette. The first big student life event of the academic school year was a three-day virtual student life experience in September 2021. This event was free to all Maricopa students and focused on a variety of topics, including personal development, emotional wellbeing and civic engagement. The goal was to help students develop skills to become stronger and more effective students and people. Next slide, please, and I will pass it on to Cordero Holmes.
Thank you, Sadie. Last fall, Rio Salado College collaborated with Road Trip Nation to provide six Rio students with a unique opportunity to take part in a documentary film. Three students went on the road to interview successful alumni across the US while another three students had informative one-on-one interviews close to home. This was spearheaded by Tempe's 2022 Businesswoman of the Year and Rio's own Vice President of Strategy and Advancement, Janelle Elias. Shout out to Vice President Elias. I was fortunate to be one of the students on this documentary and on March 23rd, Rio Salado Road Trip Documentary made its debut at the Rio Salado Conference Center. Those in attendance were many and included governing board member, Dr. Thor. Thank you, Dr. Thor, for your unending support to Rio Salado College and on a personal level to me. Thank you. Next slide, please. On this slide, I want to highlight Rio Connect, a new online platform used by Rio students to connect with one another to help foster a sense of belonging. Rio Connect was launched in August 2021 and for several months, the College Innovation Network at WGU Labs worked with Rio Salado to examine the impact of the online community on Rio students' sense of belonging. The results of that examination were published in February by WGU Labs and featured in a story by Inside Higher Ed. The research showed that through the use of Rio Connect, students attending the college online could feel a greater sense of belonging because of their engagement in this virtual community. Importantly, PTK students supported and guided this initiative by engaging with other Rio students and Rio Connect to create this sense of belonging. One of those students who had a lot of posts, a lot of great posts was Carolyn and I'll pass it on to her. Take it away, Carolyn. Next slide, please.
Thank you. PTK, as you can see by the slides, Rio PTK chapter had a successful year in terms of accomplishments. I also want to point out, just like many other colleges at Rio Salado, much of our work and collaboration was done virtually, in our case, through Zoom. Rio Salado service projects for the year, next I will highlight a few of those of the student service projects during 2021 and 2022 school year. In November, PTK and the college partnered with New Life Center, a local agency that serves survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. Rio Salado hosted a donation drive to support the center. In April, Rio's chapter of the National Society of Leadership and Success partnered with New Leaf, a Diamond Dynasty, to host a virtual presentation titled Voices of the Homeless. This was an effort to educate students, employees and community members on the topic of homelessness to create a greater awareness of the social challenge. Finally, I'm also proud to say that I organized and founded the Free Brown Bag Lunch, which has been actively servicing people who are homeless for the past 16 months, feeding over 2,000 citizens. And I will pass the next slide on to Sadie. Next slide.
Please go think, yes. The next slide, please. All right, I would like to highlight a few of our Rio Salado entrepreneurs. One student, Devotara Hill showcased her business two left feet in front of over 400 people at the National Association for Community College Entrepreneurships Conference in Minnesota. She shared the story of her business and also being a mother, performer, dance instructor and student. Two other Rio students were also honored with scholarships and advising support to help them develop their businesses. And these students are Tara Lopez for spoiled dog care and Fanny Hirschberger with Citrine Accounting and Taxes. Now I have the honor to pass it on to John Bastian, the coordinator of student life at Rio Salado. Thank you.
Thank you, Sadie. Before we go this evening, I want to highlight a few scholarships awarded to our students because of their academic achievements and also because of their leadership and involvement at the community, college and community levels. Carolyn Shack and Cordero Holmes, both people you've met tonight, were chosen for the All Arizona Scholarship at the local level and then also named Coca-Cola Scholars at the national level. Cordero also was chosen for the very competitive Hyde Scholarship, one of only 10 PTK students awarded nationally. Finally, Cordero was the only person in Arizona chosen or recently selected to receive the prestigious Jack Kent Cooke undergraduate transfer scholarship. An award that comes with up to $55,000 a year in support, plus guidance and advising from the Jack Kent Cooke Foundation. Congratulations to Cordero and Carolyn on your awards and thank you for our wonderful students for your engagement. Antoinette, take it away.
Thank you, John, and thank all you for allowing us to kind of present what an eventful year we had at Rio Salado and we're definitely looking forward to more. I would like to give a special thanks to the Rio Salado administration team as well as President Kate Smith, who always takes the time out to engage with her students and always remind us how great we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, President Sullivan, this is Kate Smith, Chancellor Gonzalez. May I have a moment to do a very professional woo-hoo about the Cook Scholarship? Because it's truly such an honor to have a student from Maricopa receive that Cook Scholarship. Thank you for that.
Okay, so do you want to do a one, two, three, everyone say woo-hoo?
Yes, please, because you know, in these difficult times, it's really wonderful when we get to celebrate.
Okay, will you lead the count?
All right, ready? Feel free to turn your mics on. One, two, three.
Congratulations. That's an outstanding award. So, and thank you, President Smith, to your team and all the students and the great work that they're doing, which is really meaningful that we have so many accomplishments happening at all of our colleges and a big shout out to all of our students and their achievements at the close of this year. But again, thank you for your presentation this evening from Rio Salado. Thank you. So moving on to continuing to hear from students, we have our student senate report this evening and we also have an introduction to our new student governing board trustee for 2223 school year. Dr. Ostos and student Martell Stevenson and Carlos Apodaca will be presenting. So with that, please take it away from there.
Thank you. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, CEC members and guests. My name is Dr. Ray Ostos and I am the District Director for Student Affairs. Tonight, representatives from the Maricopa Student Senate will be presenting a report to you. So we have Martell Stevenson, who is the Chair from Phoenix College, Carlos Apodaca, Deputy Chair from Gateway Community College. So I believe both gentlemen are on and we'll have them do the presentation.
So much. I'm thrilled to be here today. We're thrilled to be having the chance to address this committee tonight over the past, everyone in this committee. So over the past year, the student senate has deliberated on numerous issues affecting our constituents. In this year, the student senate has undertaken unprecedented efforts to increase the visibility of the student senate on our campuses and to connect more effectively with the students we serve. In addition to serving in a number of other student leadership positions and district and college level committees. And I am, I'm Martell Stevenson. I'm the Chair of the Maricopa Student Senate. Next, I will pass the presentation off to the Student Senate Vice Chair, Carlos Apodaca.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, the CEC and guests. My name is Carlos Luis Apodaca. I am the Deputy Chair of the Maricopa Student Senate and I'm a proud graduate of Gateway Community College and Glendale Community College this May. Next slide, please. These are the 2021 to 2022 Maricopa Student Senators. So we have our secretary representing Rio Salado, Emma Harlow, who is also PTK member, Mr. Martell Stevenson, the Chair, is also PTK member representing Phoenix, myself at Gateway, also PTK member, Ms. Varsha Catry, representing Chandler Gilbert Community College, PTK member, Ms. Aubrey Barclay, representing Australia Mountain, also PTK member, Ms. Regina Webster, representing South Mountain, also PTK member, Mr. John Matthew Garcia, representing Glendale Community College, also PTK member, and an All Arizona PTK Scholar. And we have Ms. Robinson, Heather Robinson, Senator representing Paradise Valley Community College. And then we have Ms. Myrna de Jesus, representing Scottsdale Community College, and Ms. Savannah Charlie, representing Mesa Community College. Next slide, please.
Thank you. So the Maricopa Student Senate meets monthly to discuss issues affecting students district-wide in Maricopa. These include events on our campuses, the accomplishments of students, our work in different committees at our colleges and at the district level, as well as selecting the next student governing board member. Next slide, please.
So some of the events that our office was able to collaboratively work together and accomplish this academic year would be collaborating with our marketing teams at our local institutions to create on-campus tours and student success testimonials through the filming and collaboration with marketing teams. I was involved in that with Gateway and then I also served as a human book for the Human Library that just took place this last spring semester. All of us participated in the 2022 Catalyst Leadership Conference. And then another significant thing we represented and took place in was the Student Club Expos at the beginning of the fall and spring semesters on campus. And we're very grateful to be back on campus in spring so that we can actually have an in-person Student Club Expos at our campuses. And then something that happened at Gateway, we put on the first student social and community event and that was called the Gecko Land over at Gateway Community College. And that was very fun and we got to engage with all of our students that were on campus during that time and socialize and spread information about resources, both academically, co-curricular and social services. And then as far as the PTK inductions, again, at Gateway and at a few other colleges, was the first time that they had in-person induction ceremonies for both the fall and the spring. Next slide, please.
And so one of the accomplishments that we're very proud of from this year of our work is that we spearheaded a collaboration between the district institutional research and the district team heading the four-year degree program rollout to develop a student survey to determine which bachelor degree programs students were interested in and to solicit their feedback on these programs, which was very important. Next slide, please.
Another accomplishment that we are very proud of as an office is developing a novel scholarship program with a novel proposed source of funding and this scholarship program was geared towards equity, raising equity about the Women Rising Program in conjunction with their counterpart, the Male Empowerment Network. So this novel scholarship program was designed to obviously have representation for the Women Rising Programs for an immediate merit scholarship that can help students identifying as such, involving in those organizations for the semester as well as university transfer scholarship. And that has collaborated in alignment with the Male Empowerment Network. And the scholarship was improving, was geared to improve both the Male Empowerment Network and Women Rising Programs. And it was very important because this is something that was unprecedented for our office to achieve this, to discuss it, to vote on it within our office and to actually meet with the Maricopa Scholarship Foundation's leadership team, which was Mr. Speaker, the CEO and the CFO, Judy Sanchez, and we are very thankful for that opportunity. And now we are just waiting for some feedback to see as far as the funding and how that process is going to go. But we are very proud that we were able to have that meeting and design a novel scholarship program with a novel source of funding to hopefully impact students for, you know, many, many years to come. Next slide, please.
So this year, we also put a lot of effort into developing a communication network of shared leadership with the college administration. So reaching out to many different leaders, like Vice Chair Apodaca just mentioned, like the marketing departments at each of our colleges to and different committees at our colleges and all kinds of leadership within the administration throughout the faculty to work together with them to serve our students better and to raise awareness about the student senate and what we have going on. So another thing that we've done is that we did over this past two semesters is that we've implemented a QR code-based student suggestion, QR code-based student suggestion forms on campuses as a method of communicating between students and communities, between the student communities and the MSS. So we have these flyers and advertisements that are, that several students were, student senators were successful in getting these, these advertisements spread throughout the campuses with various different means. On the campus televisions across campus, that was one very exciting way, but through flyers and through having these advertisements printed in different student publications at our colleges. So this was another very important accomplishment to the student senate this year. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Mr. Martell. Another important accomplishment that happened specifically at Gateway that I was involved in spearheading was developing a novel course module assignment for an intercultural communication course asynchronous modality. And the reason why that this was well-received and impactful is because it was asking students in the asynchronous modality to step outside of the box and the confinement of that class. So typically, students in that class don't log on at a set time. They don't meet in person. But I thought it was important that we have a conversation about deconstructing cultural identities and cultural stereotypes and single narratives as a communication major myself. And this was a wonderful class because it was very culturally diverse. There was 22 students from Africa, from Central America, Mexico, Mexican-Americans. 90% of them were first generation. And we had Europe students, we had students who were veterans of the armed services. And so the students really got to, they got paired up and they had to have a discussion, which myself and the instructor, Dr. Suava, modeled with our own cultural identities and stereotypes for them. We recorded, we prepped them two weeks in advance. We rolled it out for them and we demoed it for these students. These students were paired up and I was in direct communication with these students via Canvas email, over the phone, over the web modality, which was usually Google Meets and helping them through this assignment, understanding the importance of it, with filling their questions. And then they wrote 250-word to 500-word reflections afterwards. And all of the students voiced that they highly valued this. They learned about, more about their own cultural identities. They learned about their partner's cultural identities. They learned that they did have cultural single narratives and stereotypes that weren't of their own design, but they were given secondhand from mass media. And so they're able to realize and analyze a lot of, they went into these conversations with preconceptions about the person that they were talking to. And after having a great conversation, they realize that it's all about communication and establishing meaning through. And after having a great conversation, they realize that, uh, it, it's all about communication and me, establishing meaning through having these diverse conversations. Next slide, please.
Thank you. So this year, uh, several of our student senators also were invited to participate in events outside of our, uh, colleges. Uh, including the Youth Agenda for American Democracy Summit, organized by the American Academy of Arts and Sciences, America's oldest learned society. And, uh, the ASU Trusted Learners Network Unconference, which is a conference that just happened today, um, that I participated in. And who, which, uh, the purpose of this conference is to kind of create and a digital tool that, um. That puts together different learning credentials and, uh, courses. To try to create a digital system where employers and schools can see, uh, in, in one place and verify the legitimacy. Of all of these credentials in one place, which would really help out our students. And, uh, yes, so it's very important that we. Try to go and represent, uh, the Student Senate and our student body in these spaces. So, and also this year, to ensure a positive student experience, the M S S provided extensive feedback on the common, Common Pages Committee. Uh, Common Pages Catalog Committee regarding the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three proposed Common Catalog Pages Changes. Which, uh, have to do with the district-wide policies at our colleges. Another very important thing. Next slide, please.
And we would just like to acknowledge once again the accomplishments. So again, two senators, uh, were P T K, uh, all-state scholarship recipients. And that was, uh, Senator Mister John Matthew Garcia, representing Glendale Community College. Also did a very good job, did very well with his commencement speech, um, and then myself received the same scholarship. And then this is very important to me, just to acknowledge, not just because I wanna highlight my own achievement. But the reason why I would like to let everyone on the call know about this. Is because this, what we're talking about earlier with the scholarship foundation and the spirit of giving and the empowerment that that has with students. So I've completely funded all four of my degrees from our wonderful institutions with scholarships. From the foundation at my colleges and within the district and within P T K. And I have learned that as I receive, I need to give back. And not only through time, but when I have the means to do that with money. And so because I was awarded these great scholarships that are paying for the next two years of my education, including books. I have received multiple scholarships after that in the last six weeks. And I'm donating, I have donated all of that right back to Gateway. And I'm very proud to acknowledge that that, uh, is going to be a scholarship. It's been set up at Gateway for these students who represent, who express financial need, who are P T K eligible and it pays for their one-time membership. And it has built-in, uh, latitude for textbook association. The scholarship fund will grow now every year through my family's tax contribution. And we'll continue to, uh, fundraise at Gateway. We've already had a few professors and a few faculty members, uh, donate to this fund. And so now this fund is hanging around fourteen hundred dollars, which is great, after I deposited the thousand from scholarship reimbursement. And, um, we're gonna be, you know, fundraising at the Gateway Gives Runway to Success, uh, event happening in the fall. And I was very fortunate to be working with, uh, Mrs. Anne Blaté at the Gateway Scholarship Foundation. So thank you to the foundation. Thank you to the district. And this is my way of continuing to give back for the rest of my life. As they continue to support students, uh, financing their education so that they don't have to take out, uh, high-interest, uh, debt and loans for their undergraduate degrees. Next slide, please.
So the members of the Student Senate, uh, don't just represent the student voice in that body. We try to, uh. Represent the student voice in many other, uh, leadership positions, like I mentioned before, in the district. And at each of our colleges. And since there's a heavy emphasis on shared governance at many of our colleges, this gives us many opportunities to do this. And we try to really encourage all the student senators to serve in these positions. Because we can take what we've learned in these different committees and bring them back, uh, to the Student Senate. And it strengthens everything, having this back and forth. So some of the committees that, uh, members of the Student Senate have served on over this past year include. The Honors and Act, Honors and Action Research Project, the Common Pages Committee. The Technology Advisory Group, TAG, the District Level Committee. The Maricopa Community Colleges Purpose Coalition, the Strategic, uh, Maricopa, uh, Strategic Planning Committee. The G W C C Bridge Academy, the Phoenix College Presidential Search Committee. The Maricopa Mental Health Task Force and the District Tribal Land Acknowledgement Committee. As well as the, uh, Mer- as well as the Maricopa Diversity Action Committee. And, um, our members lobbied for a permanent student representative position on that committee. And we're successful in receiving that, which we're very happy about. As well as the Phoenix College Equity, Inclusion and Diversity Committee. And one of our members was appointed to be the first student tri-chair on that committee. Next, uh, slide, please. So, um. We also, uh, worked this semester to interview and to, to help select the next, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Student Governing Board Member. Lynn Burnett, congratulations. We're very excited, uh, for everything that he will accomplish over this next year. We have great faith in him. So he is a student, uh, Lynn is a student at Chandler Gilbert Community College. His major is Airway Science Technology. Um, he has worked with the Federal Aviation Administration, the F A A, as a private pilot. He has served in the United States Army. He's a veteran, an Army Ranger, an instructor. And he's a civically engaged student who strives to represent and advocate for the student voice. And we are confident that he will be a great addition to your board. Next slide, please. And this is a picture of our Student Senate class this year. Next slide. So thank you for, thank you so much for giving us this time to talk to you today. Uh, I would like to now open the floor up for any questions.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation this evening. I think what I'd like us to do at some point is, uh, perhaps engage in a work session with you. To learn more about that and, and have a, an exchange of questions and conversations with all of you. As we understand your outstanding achievements and your interesting commitment to the students of the district. Uh, I also want to thank you for presenting to us this evening, Mister Burnett. And, uh, am I, to understand, Mister Burnett is with us this evening?
Yes, I am here, President Sullivan.
Yes, hello, Mister Burnett, and welcome. We're looking forward to having you join us after July one, seated at the board. So I understand that this evening, uh, you might have a few words you'd like to share with us. And Quentin, I know you're still with us this evening. And your turn will be at the June, uh, excuse me, at the end of June meeting. But Mister Burnett, uh, would, do you have some words that you'd like to share with us tonight?
Uh, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Dr. Gonzalez and members of the C E C and guests. Um, as the incoming, uh, uh, member of the, uh, the governing board, the student governing board member. I'm just, I, I must say, I'm a bit overwhelmed. Um, I'm not, you, I don't usually find myself in that situation. Uh, but I wanted to become, uh, a part of the student leadership. Because I, I saw from my vantage point, sitting in a classroom with the students, that it didn't appear to me that there was just, um. There was, it didn't appear to me that there was, there was engagement or, uh, or interest. Um, and I was, you know, having children of my own, I was, I was struggling to. Trying to find a way to, to encourage or motivate. And it just didn't seem like I was getting through. And as I have sat through this entire meeting, I am nothing but amazed at the talent, uh, and the, the energy and the excitement, the enthusiasm. The, the advocacy, the work habit, um, the dedication of, of not only the governing board members, but the student senate. And the people who did presentations for the F E C. I'm just, I'm truly, I feel like I, I need to just sit back and continue to absorb because this is a total different perspective than I was. Than I initially had of, of just going to school. And, uh, but it's what I wanted to be a part of. And I'm very, very glad to be here. So I'm looking forward to getting to know everybody, uh, better. And, uh, looking forward to sitting down with Mike Green, uh, Student Life Center and the interim dean of Student Affairs, um, next week. And, uh, you know, getting a handle on what I can do to help contribute to this, this great organization that I see here. So thank you.
Thank you, Mister Burnett. We look forward to having you join us. And, uh, hopefully we'll be able to meet more in person as the year unfolds. And we'll be able to work together to do outstanding things for all the people involved in this district from multiple angles. So thank you. Look forward to working with you. And I agree with you. Tonight's presentations have been pretty outstanding. So thank you again for your comments. I'm going to move us forward on the agenda to the Emeritus Awards and Recognitions. I want to remind everyone that tonight we do have one. And, uh, as you've heard from me in the past, we're still looking at processes by which we can. Return to recognizing outstanding contributions of our faculty as they retire from our system and doing so in person. Right now, what we're doing is recognizing folks in the Maricopa newsletter. That includes a short profile of our Emeritus recipients. And our board assistant, Elzett, will forward the newsletter to all of those recipients. We're hopeful that, again, we'll be able to celebrate distinctions in a more formal manner sometime in the future. So congratulations to our meritorious person. And, uh, this recognition is on our consent agenda for the evening. So Chancellor, uh, Dr. Gonzalez, it's your turn. You have some other words.
Yes, thank you, President Sullivan. And, uh, good evening, uh, board members, um, members of C E C. Faculty, staff, students and guests that are with the seats this evening. As you opened, um. This evening's meeting, I, I also reflected on today's, uh, tragic event, um, President Sullivan. And having just picked up my own son from school earlier today and come home to that news was, um, pretty heart-wrenching. And so, you know, unfortunately, we've experienced these things all too often here recently. And we're all impacted by the various tragedies that happen around the country and the effects all differently. The, the fact is, they all have an effect on us, but some affect more than others for whatever the reasons. And all I'm wanting to say in this moment is that my, um, thoughts and prayers go to those families of today's victims and. And spinning to those of the, you know, of what has happened recently across the country. I just remind everybody to be safe, be vigilant. And if you see something, say something. I know that's, that's what we try to abide by on our, our college campuses. We're an educational institution, so that's, it's particularly close to home. And it's something that we need to constantly be vigilant of. And. You know, and I just encourage us all to stay as safe as possible. So thank you for that opportunity to also share my, my thoughts on that. Um, so as I go into my formal presentation, there are a couple of parts to this presentation this evening. One will be my comments. And then I'm going to turn it over to the FAC, uh, group so that they can provide you an update on the work that they've been doing. And where they will be seeking your approval and some of the policies that will change related to the faculty agreement. Um, first, I'd like to begin by thanking the board for its support of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, budget earlier this evening. It's a culmination of quite a bit of work and certainly, um, uh, quite a bit of engagement with our governing board, um, all the way back to early last fall. So it's really good to see this finally come across the finish line with the overwhelming support that it received. I'd also like to acknowledge that we somehow got through last week, Mrs. Sullivan, without acknowledging the fact that it was your birthday. Um, I wanna say belated happy birthday on behalf of Maricopa Community Colleges. And we hope that you had a good time. And we know you had a good time. You were worth a, uh, a new, uh, baby granddaughter. So we hope it was good.
Well, thank you very much. It's very kind of you to remember or acknowledge it.
I also would like to congratulate, um, all of the colleges and, and the groups who put on graduations and convocations over the past few weeks. I had the opportunity to attend one of those and then became ill and had to miss several convocations and graduations. But I saw on social media and I saw in the emails and, and, um, you know, that they were well-attended, well-celebrated. That there's an enormous amount of work and energy that goes into planning those. I wanna thank everybody involved in that. But I especially wanna thank our faculty and staff that helped get, get those students across that finish line. And I wish all of those students, uh, happiness and success on their next, next steps into the workforce. Or onto the university that they're transferring to. And I, I hope that they don't forget about Maricopa and the experience that they had here. And that they, we know that they will carry on the values that we've, uh, instilled in us during our time with us. I'd like to extend a congratulations to Kaderah Holmes on winning the Cook Scholarship. I don't know that many people understand and realize what an amazing accomplishment that is. And to have only been the only community college seat in the state of Arizona is even more impressive. But to be one of just a handful across the country is amazing. I'd like to welcome the new student trustee, uh, Lynn Burnett. I'm looking forward to working with you, Mister Burnett. I'm very impressed by your, uh, your past. And thank you for your service. Uh, I know you're going to be, uh, I know you've gotta be a tough person to be an Army Ranger. So I respect that very much, sir. And look forward to working with you. Um, tonight, as we move into some of the items that you're going to be looking at in terms of approving, um, uh, particularly around salary increases. I'm making a request with the board for a consideration of a one-time policy exemption request. And largely due to the significant rise in inflationary costs. We recommend that we allow for a one-time exemption to Policy C four. To allow employees who receive the verbal warning to receive the four-point-one-three percent increase, um, in pay. That we are hoping to garner your support later this evening on. Currently, there are ten employees in this category and the cost is projected at thirty thousand dollars, excluding any additional payroll tax adjustments. And no official, no, excuse me, no additional funding is needed beyond, uh, the proposed budget allocation. Um, and as we get into that agenda item, if there are any specific items on this one-time policy, uh, request, we'll be happy to. Answer any questions associated with that, at that time, President Sullivan.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna move into a legislate, a very quick legislative update to let you know that the activity has been, uh, pretty limited. Um, since the last time that we've gotten together. House Bill twenty seventeen, which restores STEM formula funding for Maricopa Community Colleges. And provides a two-year expenditure limitation reprieve is, is, um, it's still on the docket and, and, and outstanding. So is House Bill twenty-six ninety-one, which invests in nursing and behavioral health workforce development initiatives. And House Bill twenty-one twenty-two, which provides supplemental funding to the Community College Adult Education Program. Um, but while the, the policy activity is somewhat stalled, we, we've remained pretty active. Uh, we recently held a semiconductor workforce lunch and learn in partnership with, with the Taiwanese Semiconductor Manufacturing Company, also known as T S M C. Where we had over twenty house members and staff come to learn about the innovative programs that we're creating to meet this immense manufacturing workforce need. In addition, we are also participating in adult education lunch and learn to educate and advocate for our community college education program. And lastly, we joined, um, the House Veterans Caucus yesterday. To educate them about the support and services that the Maricopa Community Colleges provide to veteran students and their family. At the federal level, we submitted for a community, um, project funding and support bio-science workforce development through C E I Lab Force. Uh, this was the part, this is actually part of the board's federal policy agenda. We're happy to recently learn that Congressman Stanton selected this as one of his earmarked funding projects. And we hope to learn in the coming months if this project makes it to the final federal fiscal twenty twenty-three budget. Government Relations has already started planning for the development of the twenty twenty-three state and federal legislative agenda. And, uh, we plan to bring recommendations forward to the board for a work session this fall. And before I turn this over to the, uh, FAC team, I'd like to wish all the students, um, our faculty and our staff. A wonderful summer. I hope that they get an opportunity to rest. And I wanna thank everybody for yet another successful, um, academic year. With that, I will now turn it over to the FAC team, who I believe will be led and started off by, um, Dr. Greg Peterson. A member of the FAC team and also the president of Chandler Gilbert Community College.
Thank you, Chancellor Gonzalez, uh. For President Sullivan, uh, governing board members, uh, members of C E C and guests. Uh, we are pleased to come to you this evening and give you a, a very brief update on the work that we have done, um, this past year. As the faculty administration collaboration team. Uh, next slide, please. So this evening, we have, um, multiple presenters. Um, uh, I will be, see, it goes to me. And then Stacy Smith, um, Dr. Joanna Kelly, Paul Frankowick. And Dr. Eddie Jenna, as we move through. And they'll introduce themselves, um, as they start each of their sections. Um, we have a quick, uh, reminder. So just wanna remind the board of our, our structure and purpose. Then we'll go through some of the primary changes for the. Then we'll go through some of the primary changes for the 202223 faculty agreement and then wrap up with next steps for FAC in response to the recent governing board resolution. Next slide, please. Next slide. So as you may recall, the Faculty Administration Collaboration Team, or FAC, was established in 2018, where we brought together adjunct faculty, residential faculty, and administration to look at our policies supporting working conditions of all faculty in our district. The first year, first couple of years, was a fairly heavy lift as we completely overhauled our faculty agreement and brought all of those components together. Annually, FAC recommends changes to our faculty agreement, so we work on smaller portions of the document. Those are vetted by our constituent groups with review by District Human Resources and then brought to the Chancellor for review and then finally to the governing board for approval. Next slide, please. Our team consists of nine members, three adjunct faculty, three residential faculty, three administration. You can see our amazing team there. I want to give them all a big shout out for the amazing time that they spent again this year, as well as support team members from the district office who have been extremely helpful in our work. Next slide, please. So, just as a reminder, attached to this document, you received two documents. One is the final agreement for 2022 faculty, 2023, the final draft. And that includes all of the articles and all of the markups. And then we provided you a faculty agreement addendum, which is specifically those articles containing the primary changes for this year, and then a notes section to give a little bit more detail on those changes. Next slide, please. With that, we'll move into our significant changes. I'll throw this over to Stacy.
Thank you. President Sullivan, members of the Board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests, my name is Stacy Smith, and I'm residential faculty at Paradise Valley and a member of the FAC team. In this section, we're going to look at just significant changes in the articles. I'm going to cover the preamble, Article 5 and Article 7, and then turn it over to my colleagues for the remaining articles. Next slide, please. So, in the preamble, there's some cleaning up of the and removal of the language that was specific to 2122 FAC process. And there is an addition of language that reflects the recent changes made by the governing board that charged the Chancellor to create and implement the new structure. And that also keeps the faculty agreement in place during this transition period as the the new document is created and the new process is created for residential faculty and adjunct faculty. Next slide, please. Article 5 covers professionalism and engagement. And the changes here really focused on clarifying the definition of in-residence and the expectations for residential faculty, really to be physically present at their designated college or district site two or more days per week. So that gives some guidance there on what in-residence mean. And this means, and this expectation is outside of class instruction or service responsibilities such as serving on a hiring committee or serving as a student club advisor, for example. And it's also detached from course modality. It also recognizes that there are some roles that faculty will fill in, especially, for example, service faculty that may require presence more often than the the two days just because of the importance of that work that that will need to be done in physically on the campus or the district location. Next slide, please. And Article 7 covers leadership, right? And some of the main pieces for the revisions in Article 7 is that the faculty supervision pay formula was updated with current numbers, the original formula from the previous faculty agreement. Those numbers were based on the 2017-2018 budget, and these new numbers reflect the 2021 budget. And so that has been updated as well as allowing for some flexibility for colleges to come into alignment with the funding range set so that there's consistency across all the colleges. We recognize that there are some pain points with trying to get all the budgets aligned and make sure there is consistency across the district. And so this gives that flexibility for colleges to operationalize and figure out how they can get into alignment. Also, in Article 7, there were some questions that arose concerning potential inequities for service faculty pay and leadership roles. And so there's updated language that basically establishes a process where service faculty load can be converted to instructional faculty load. And this was some of the great work done by HR to help us figure this out, right? So that that load conversion really makes it so that all faculty load can be treated the same in the faculty supervision funding model. And the last piece for Article 7 is now occupational program directors or OPDs are included in the faculty supervision funding model. There were some, there was some confusion as to whether OPD pay was or was not included. And this has been clarified now so that it is very clear that OPD pay is also a part of kind of that that full bucket of money, if you will, for supervision pay. I mean, those are some of the highlights from Article 7. Now going to pass it on to Dr. Kelly to talk about the next article.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the Board, CEC members and guests. In reference to Article 10, updates occurred related to the 4.13% increase. So, we made those updates across Article 10. We also added a base rate calculation model that includes the 4.13% increase as well. Again, to bring about that consistency within the faculty agreement for supplemental pay categories. Next slide, please. Another item updated within the faculty agreement within Article 11 includes clarification around reimbursement of unused sick leave. We adjusted this language to align with the district's current practices and to be consistent with the staff policy structure. Now, I will turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, President Sullivan, Board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, friends and colleagues. I wanted to talk to you about Article 19. Basically, you have the text, so I'll just be as brief as possible. Article 19 updates the timeline and reporting requirements for faculty evaluations, makes them more codified and standard. And also, it expands adjunct faculty professional development to pay for participation in the approved tier system and grant credit for new movement on the salary tier structure with adjunct faculty, as you can see, moving from tier two to tier three with 25 hours of approved professional development. We worked out the system for taking care of that and just basically made it so that the tier system has utility for folks at all stages of their career as we implement it. And so I'll turn it over to Eddie to talk about where FAC is going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the Board, CEC and guests. I'm going to take us, take us home here. Only got a couple of slides. Next slide, please. In summer of 2022, which is the summer we are entering right now, we have a couple, a couple distinct goals. There will be a work group led by the Chancellor's Office that's going to develop the new FAC model that you authorized, that the Board authorized in its resolution. And that will be coming forth in the month of June. There will be a subgroup of representatives of the residential faculty and the administration working on a specific issue related to a somewhat arcane topic of the 25 load limit in the faculty agreement and how it relates to stipends, special services, contracts, and other forms of compensation. And then we're going to be, do with the planning and the pre-work necessary to start this fall on the 2324 faculty agreement and related agreement for the adjunct faculty. Next slide, please. That's a pretty full summer, but we also have a great deal of work to do in the fall as well. Under the new model that'll be in place, we will begin work both on the adjunct faculty policies and the residential faculty policies as well. And then we're going to be doing some work in a work group led by the Chancellor's Office to take the faculty agreement as it exists today and to sort of disentangle it a little bit so that there are separate, there are separate policy manuals or handbooks or whatever it might be for residential faculty and for adjunct faculty in alignment with the Board resolution. And that is the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. If you all have any questions or comments, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, team, for your presentation this evening. I believe as we're on record for first read on this, if there are any questions, Board members may probably leave their questions to that point. So with that, I'm going to move us forward unless you have further comment. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, President Sullivan, if I may offer a correction to something that I said about the one-time policy exemption request. I said to allow those employees who received a verbal warning, when in fact, I should have said who received a written warning. And that's the way that it's been constructed and provided to you prior to this meeting and the other Board members. So, what you have is correct. What I said was incorrect. And I just wanted to offer that clarification. I want to thank everybody who presented tonight. I know it's been a long night for everybody. I appreciate your patience. It's been all done really well and very impressive work. So, thank you to everyone who participated. Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And I know it has been a long night of presentations, but I would have to agree with Mr. Burnett that the information that's been shared tonight has been both important but also acknowledges the hard work and effort of so many people that are involved with this district to make it the outstanding one it is. So, thank you, everyone, for your work tonight. We now are moving into our business section of the agenda. I do want to start that section off with a citizens interim letter to be read this evening. As you know, citizens interim is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. And in compliance with the open meeting law, the governing board can either discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. And if necessary, we can take these under advisement and place on subsequent agendas. I'm going to read the email, which is what we, or the letter that's been presented for citizens interim as has been our practice over the last, gosh, years since we've been meeting virtually. What the practice is, is the letter is submitted to our assistant at the governing board office. There is a deadline by which letters need to be received. And as folks are informed, it will be read by a board member. In this case, it will be read by me. And there is five minutes devoted to this piece. So, Board members and community, going forward, we have a letter from Ms. Tan Hupli, and I apologize if I have mispronounced the name, but the last name is spelled H A U P T L I. This is her letter as a citizen, for the citizens interim portion. President Sullivan, members of the Board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Dr. Tan Hupli, and I am a faculty member in the Education Studies Department at Mesa Community College. I would like to submit this request in regard to an article on the faculty agreement 7.2.13, Removal of a Department/Division Chair. Attached is a letter I have written to the faculty leadership expressing what I believe to be the negative impacts of the current process. I'm going to interrupt the reading to say that that letter will be emailed to Board members and is also noted in the public record. With that, I'll continue reading her letter. I respectfully request that the Board read into the record the following bullet points outlining the key aspects of my concerns to be considered for immediate revision for Article 6.1 Memoranda of Understanding and 6.1.1 Enhanced Variances to the Faculty Agreement. Bullet points. One, the role of department chair is blurred between being administration and faculty. Bullet point two, chairs often are called to make and/or implement difficult decisions. Bullet point three, in its current form, it can be used as a weapon against chairs with whom a faculty member disagrees. Bullet point four, in its current form, the process puts an enormous amount of pressure on the small department. The letter continues, the mandatory faculty training, academic freedom, and overview for MCCCD faculty administrators states in part that, quote, "faculty should not be disciplined for requesting a voice in institutional policy, for criticizing trustees, or for voicing an opinion pertaining to the actions or policies of their institutions," end quote. I am voicing an opinion about the chair recall process. I offer the following suggestions to amend the process to be considered by the FAC team. Point one, prior to a chair recall, there must be a chair evaluation where a significant number of residential and adjunct faculty express dissatisfaction. The chair must address the issues raised in the evaluation. Point two, if there is a specific concern by an individual faculty member or less than 10% of the department, then a formal grievance must first be filed with a mandatory formal mediation process. Bullet point three, if at that time there still is no resolution, then the recall process may be initiated with the following significant change. One, the chair must be provided with a copy of the complaint document to provide a rebuttal to be included in the documentation for the residential faculty voting. Point two, if adjunct faculty voices are to be included, there must be evidence that the chair has had access to meet and work collaboratively with those faculty, as may be the case with adjunct working closely with OPDs. Adjunct faculty responses must be factored into the final vote. Last, the process for feedback must be no less than five business days exclusive of weekends and holidays. I appreciate the opportunity to share my opinion regarding the chair recall process. Thank you for taking the time to read this into the record. Sincerely, I Tan Hupli. And with that, again, I want to remind everyone that was the citizen interim to which the Board cannot respond at this time. And the attached letter that she referenced will be sent to Board members and, again, incorporated for the public record. So, thank you for your submission of a letter to read this evening. Now, moving on with business for the Board, we move to the consideration for the consent agenda. All items under this section of the agenda are consent matters unless they are removed from the consent agenda at this time. I have noted that I have received notice from Dr. Linda Thor to remove Item G3 for action. So, with, are there any other comments on the consent agenda for removal or Dr. Gonzalez or Board members? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item G3? And is, will there be a second? Do I have a motion?
This is Ms. Smith, so moved.
Okay, Ms. Smith made the move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second, Dr. Thor? Thank you. Is there any discussion on the, can't do that. So, with that, all those in favor to approve the consent agenda as presented minus Item G3, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Being none, the motion will carry as a consent agenda approved. I will note at this time, Mrs. McGrath has left the meeting, so there are currently five Board members present. Mr. Evans, do you have a vote on the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. So, carried with five Board members, including and the student trustee vote, Mrs. McGrath is absent, but now with Mrs. Nguyen. Thank you. So, moving to the non-consent agenda items, let's take Item G3 first. And do I have a motion to approve Item G3? Motion and a second.
So, so moved.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Is there a second?
A second.
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. With that, given that there is a motion on the table to approve item G three, let's open for discussion. Dr. Thor.
Thank you, President Sullivan. I, I'll be brief. I have a comment and a question. First, I want to thank Dr. Georgiana Kelly and Dr. Frank Wilson for the very comprehensive and very informative response that they provided to the questions that I asked at Agenda Review regarding the livable wage. I found it an extremely informative document. I did note with, with great enthusiasm that on page eight of their response, they said, sharing in the board's interest to implement the livable wage as soon as possible. We have accelerated our project planning process for the livable wage with a planned implementation date of August 2022. Livable wage pay rates will start in August, just one month after the staff equity and market pay adjustment. So given that, I would like to ask whether the administration would consider amending item E, recommending the livable wage be implemented no later than December 31, 2022, to change that to no later than August 31, 2022, or if you're more comfortable, to September 30, 2022.
And Dr. Gonzalez, is Dr. Kelly present?
Yes.
President Sullivan, Dr. Thor and Dr. Kelly should be available. I think I just heard her.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much, Chancellor and President Sullivan, members of the board. Yes, we can amend that to, we will be able to apply the livable wage by August 31. Dr. Thor.
Thank, thank you very much. Then, President Sullivan, may I amend my motion to change E, the language in E, from no later than December 31, 2022 to no later than August 31, 2022.
Yes, you may. I don't believe we need a vote on your. Yeah.
Dr. Norene needs to concur.
Yes.
I concur.
Okay, so with that, is there any discussion on the amended motion? Being none, we have a motion on, an amended motion on the floor that's been made and seconded to accept item G three as presented with the amendment on item G three E. Have a date change from December 31, 2022 to August 31, 2022. All those in favor of supporting the motion, vote by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries on a vote of five president, board members, Dr., excuse me, Mr. Evans, do you have a vote on the motion?
Aye.
Sorry, I should have asked you first. So with that, we have our student trustee and five board members, the quorum of the board present at this time, voting aye. The motion carries. With that, then, we'll move to the next item for consideration on the non-consent action items, and that is approval of expenditure budgeted funds not to exceed $7 million for district marketing to contract with any approved vendors under RFP 3447-6 for digital marketing services for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. Is there a motion to approve this expenditure and a second? Is there a motion? Anyone? To support this? And who is that, please?
Dr. Norene.
Thank you. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor of supporting the motion as presented, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? And that, Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Thank you. So with that, the motion carries with the five board members present and the student trustee present. So vote of five to zero in approval with our student trustee's vote as well. So the motion carries. Thank you. So we move further into the business. What we have for first read is the employment and separations of March 19, 2022 through April 22, 2022. Are there any comments or questions? We also have at first read of revised policy 2.0, chancellor limitations and responsibilities. Are there any questions or comments? We also have then for first reading of proposed fiscal year 2223 Faculty and Administration Collaboration Team Fact Agreement effective July 1, 2022. Do we have any comments or questions? Being none, the first reads will go forward to our next, towards our next board meeting approval. We have then monitoring reports in front of us, budget analysis report fund one, general unrestricted fund for the 10 months ending 4/30/2022. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, now we're going to go to our board reports for the board members who are present this evening. Ms. Peters Smith, do you have anything to report this evening?
President Sullivan, I do. First of all, I wanted to just tell the board that although I was not there in person, but my money was. We had yet another C4Vets golf tournament that was raising money through the foundation for veteran scholarships. It was one in the fall, one in the spring, and it's, again, a good example, as you heard earlier from the foundation report, about partnerships with private entities who are raising funds for great causes through the foundation for our students. Secondly, I wanted to tell the board that I was very privileged to be able to attend the nurses penning ceremony at Paradise Valley Community College and their graduation ceremonies the following evening. I want to especially thank Dr. Dale and his team for their great hospitality. Several even the board have had the chance to do graduation ceremonies, but since I joined the board as the pandemic started, the first time they've been able to do in-person celebrations. Just a couple of brief observations. One at the penning ceremony, I thought it was, it was very apparent of a hot process of our program as in nursing, as every single student who was introduced had a job already lined up. And many of them expressed great interest in looking at the bachelor's program, maybe coming forward in the nursing arena as part of an opportunity for them. The following night at the graduation ceremony, Dr. Dale turned to me and said, look, you're going to see, I want you to see this. When he asked for those students who were graduating that were there as a first-time member of their family to graduate, the significant number of those graduates and the excitement and the pride in the audience was certainly very, very apparent, and again, demonstrating to me as a board member how valuable those programs are for our community. And then finally, I was able to attend the S E C graduation ceremony, and again, I want to thank Dr. Hippolito and Dr. Zichinsky for their hospitality. There, interestingly enough, there was a minor technical glitch, not anything to do with our team, but because we were sitting in damage auditorium, and sure enough, one of our graduates stood up. I was able to, with the help of many, many students in administration, very quickly come up with a workaround in the ceremony proceeded, demonstrating the ability, the confidence, and the technology that's happening at S E C to allow us to move forward, to adapt to changes and, and be flexible. So it was a great learning experience for me, and I appreciated the opportunity to be a part of it. And I encourage board members who haven't had a chance to do that, to do it. It really is, it's worth your time, and it justifies all the time you serve as a volunteer to see the joyous recognition of these great successes at our, at our campuses. And that is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Peters Smith. Ms. McGrath is no longer with us this evening. Dr. Norene, do you have any comments?
I do. I've got a couple. First, I want to welcome Mr. Bennett to the board when he gets to sign up officially. And just want to echo some of the comments said before about the students and graduations and convocations and all those wonderful things that happened this last month. I think I was trying to make up for missing out in the last couple of years because, let's see if I can go through the list of things that I was, I was honored to, to attend. So I got to go to the PTK induction ceremony at South Mountain, which was always wonderful. I went to the graduations for ACE and Hoop of Learning at Phoenix College and South Mountain Community College, and was able to attend. These are the programs I really liked, the convocations throughout the week for ability, the first annual, the first abilities convocation they had this year at Rio Salado, the veterans convocation, African-American, Native American, and Hispanic. Those are, those are all wonderful events to go to because we get people from all over the district there to, to celebrate. And then the regular graduations, thank Dr. Diaz and her team, and Dr. Olson and her team, and Dr. Nemo and his team to invite me to, to attend those graduations. And I also got to attend the Phoenix College Prep graduation, which was fun. It was always fun to see the students graduate with their associates before they graduate with their, with their high school diploma. And I was also invited to be part of the Microsoft data center grant opening over at Estrella Mountain, which was also a lot of fun. So that was what kept me busy last night. So that was my report.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. My main update is that I wanted to say thank you very much to Dr. Greg Peterson, the president at Chandler Gilbert Community College for the invitation to attend the commencement ceremony. I was able to attend one for Behavioral Science and Human Services, Business Entrepreneurship and Management, Computer and Information Technology, and Culture and Society. It was a very moving ceremony, and I especially want to acknowledge the student speaker, Brianna Leadsman, who did an excellent job sharing her story. And congratulations to all of the graduates, and thank you for the faculty and staff to helping our students get to this point. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Thor?
Thank you. May is always a very busy month for us. On May 4, I attended the farewell reception for Dr. Paul Dale, recognizing his many, many years of outstanding service to the Maricopa Community Colleges, and particularly his service to Paradise Valley Community College. That same evening, I attended Rio Salado College's commencement, where a whopping 290 dual enrollment students received their associate degree before they received their high school diploma. Really fantastic. And of course, as you've heard earlier, the fantastic Cordero Holmes was the student speaker that night. The next day, I represented the board at the Pacific Regional Meeting of the Association of Community College Trustees. May 13, I attended the Mesa Community College commencement. And it's noteworthy that this was their first ever commencement that was held in an air-conditioned facility. And all of us in attendance were very appreciative of that. May 15, I attended the major taxpayers' meeting. And again, that's a wonderful service that, that we provide every year, and it's good to hear the support from the major taxpayers. On May 20, I attended the Phoenix Business Journal's Most Admired Leaders Virtual Event where Chancellor Gonzalez was very deservedly recognized. And then yesterday and today, as the board's representative on the General Counsel Search Committee, I participated in interviews with the semifinalists. And I look forward and encourage other board members to participate in the forums with the finalists, which will take place on June 15. And I would like to join others in wishing our students and our faculty a very relaxing summer. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, President Sullivan. First and foremost, I wanted to say my congratulations towards Mr. Lynn Burnett, who will be filling my role on this board on July 1. I have the utmost confidence that he will be delivering the student voice to this body in a amazing way. On, of course, the finals are going on, and as a student, I am bogged down, or was bogged down, I should say, with studying. But I did make sure to attend a few campuses over the course of this month, as well as part of last month. I had the pleasure of attending MCC's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Events, both at their Red Mountain Campus and at their Southern and Dobson Campus. And it was truly a remarkable event to see both faculty and students there to accomplish and hear this message. On May 4 as well, I attended Dr. Dale's retirement, and I will say that thank you, Dr. Dale, for everything you've done for Paradise Valley Community College. The student body will miss you there. I've heard so many good things from the students I've talked with. Overall, that is everything I've really done this month. Like I said, finals. Thank you, President Sullivan.
You're very welcome, Mr. Evans. So my turn, and some of you heard, I have a new granddaughter, but I had to unexpectedly leave Phoenix the end of April to attend to those family concerns. And so I missed an incredible number of events that I had both looked forward to attending, wanted to attend, and planned to attend. So to all of you who participated in graduations, convocations, celebrations, retirement parties, and all of that, know that I'm very, very disappointed that I missed the opportunity to offer my congratulations and best wishes in regards to everyone. I do want to thank and celebrate the board members who were able to make the many events that occur in the end of April and May, and acknowledge that you represent us as a body very well. And I think are very obvious, as you've presented this evening, that as a board, we stand very proud and humbled by the outstanding accomplishments of so many people that will, starts with the students, moves to the faculty, celebrates our administration and staff. So thank you for all that. As time has worn, gone on, not worn, as time has gone on, I have been able to clue into some things virtually the last week or so, and so I also attended virtually the major taxation meeting and appreciated the comments and inputs from so many people that pay attention to our tax profile. And also, I was in attendance for Dr. Gonzalez's recognition as one of the outstanding business and community leaders sponsored by the Phoenix Business Journal's event. And so congratulations to you, Dr. Gonzalez. To those of you presidents, and Dr. Dale, certainly your name has been mentioned a few times this evening. And I wish you the best in your transitions. And I also, at the same time, want to welcome those new leaders of our different colleges as they join our teams. So thank you all for what you're doing. Thank you all for staying through an extended meeting. Majority of it was in the presentations from students and colleges, et cetera. And we learned so much from all of those. Want to congratulate the foundation again on the outstanding work that they're doing. As we move into June, I want to remind folks that on June 14, we will have a special session and work session on the charter high school budgets for fiscal year 2223. on the charter high school budgets for fiscal year 2223, also mandated by the charters that run those. We will have a June 17 governing board retreat all day. And on June 21st, we will have our usual agenda review session beginning at 4:30. June 28 will be a work session and a regular board meeting, our last one of this fiscal year, again with a public hearing at 6:30 for consideration of adoption of our charter high school budgets for fiscal year 2223. I'm going to conclude our long meeting this evening, saying thank you to everyone and embrace those kids and think about families as they struggle to absorb the tragedies that tend to fall so many people at times. So with that, our meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all for your attention, and it's 8:42 in your time zone. So good night, everyone. Thank you.